Uh, no, I mean, it's not recording live. Uh, so if you want to give us like a minute or two. Uh, he's having a problem streaming.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for joining us. I call this meeting Pantramic City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, would the clerk call the rules, please? Or whoever in the house of her?
Yep, we will call, um, Mayor Milraal.
Present.
Councilman Fari. Councilman Musa.
Present.
Councilman Sadman.
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Sumai.
Yeah, present.
Councilman Hassan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the people, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States of America. Alright, thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Uh, nothing listed, Mayor.
Alright, alright, then we, it seems like we have a long agenda tonight. So we will proceed to the proclamation, recognitions, and presentations. And we have first one for the GM student program. Several youth participants to receive certificates of appreciation from the city as seen.
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel here to bring up our students. I'm telling you, take it.
Absolutely. I'm glad to welcome back the General Motors Students Corps Program to be recognized by Mayor and Council today. Since about 2013, the program has summer after summer brought overgrew students to take on different projects in the city like communication and park cleanups. And they do really terrific work. We're super appreciative of everything they do to contribute to the city and hone their own professional development skills. We have some photos that Brandon is going to pull up of different projects that they've worked on in the city this summer. And then after that, the youth have their own presentation to bring as well. One of the projects they tackled was a cleanup initiative on Hamtramck Drive. Um, they've also taken on trimming different overgrowth that have covered street signs in the city. Um, they've worked on improving seating at Hamtramck Stadium and beautifying Holbrook Park. Okay, and then we'll pull it up here. And while he's doing that, I'd invite the presenters to come up as well. They have their own visual aid, so you will have them present that for council.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yumdir Afad.
And my name is Freon Tiroi. And a little background story for us that I am also an immigrant who came here two years ago. And when I first came here, obviously, we're gonna have immigrant problems where he is not knowing English as our first language as well. And when we came, we first stepped into Hamtramck, and Hamtramck has a lot to give us back. And that's why I have been super grateful to Hamtramck. And my only motto throughout my high school was finding ways to get back to Hamtramck.
Me myself, I came here not very long ago as well. And how Hamtramck has welcomed me, I always wanted to do something for the community and either it's raising voice or doing something, uh, some projects. And GM has gave me the opportunity to do a lot of community work. And we will like to share some of the major projects that we did. Not everything, because we know time is very important to you guys. Yeah.
I can hold it for you if you'd like.
So first start with our drive project, which is in here.
Um, this road cleanup project was in the northeast corner of the GM plan next to Hamtramck Drive and corner where there's a middle school. And it wasn't very walkable. Some weeds were taller than me, overgrown tree branches. And we took on the initiative. I think, uh, it was also recommended by the city for us to do it. And, uh, we partnered up with GM Cares and we helped clean the sidewalk. And now it's very walkable.
And another project that we did is a cleanup project and restoration project for a park in Holbrook. This park has this really beautiful gazebo over there. But if you can see, if you have to look, you have to look carefully to see there is a fallen tree over the gazebo. And right opposite to that park is also a school. So if you think about the safety of the school students is also a problem. So that's why we took this project on our hands. And we paid, uh, somebody to get rid of that fallen tree over the gazebo. We cleaned the gazebo and we also trimmed the trees, branches that was covering the gazebo to avoid any safety hazard in the future.
We also replaced three of the Welcome to Hamtramck signs. We drove past and we saw it was very beat up. And for the visitors coming into Hamtramck, we thought it would affect our reputation. So we took the initiative. We had them replaced as well.
And another one is we also cleaned up the weeds that was covering the sign, which says no turn on red. When you, uh, when drivers go by, they cannot see the sign properly. And that might also cause tickets or future problems to the drivers. So we took the project in our hands and we removed and get rid of all the weeds that was covering the sign, which is no turn on red.
And another project that I'd like to show you is the historic Hamtramck Stadium. We helped stain the bleachers. This project was started by DM Cares along with the city. And they couldn't finish it because of rain and some other reasons. We took on that and we helped finish staining the bleachers. And what I like to say is that we did something for the history. Yeah?
Because of the history.
It's the historic stadium.
Yeah. And then we did a small project all over, but that's set.
Yeah, that's just.
Okay, I'll now present the certificates. Um, and as I read your names, students, if you could just come up and receive them. Um, so first we have Yomkun Roy. Sakib Ahmed. Thank you. And then Farnella Begich. Thank you. And then we have Enbi Chafri. And Mohamad Akthar as well. And, uh, with Mr. Ramon. And Ami Ben, I have you as well. Thank you. Excellent, we'll do a photo at the end. Um, and we're thankful for the facilitators of the program. Bob Riley and Amber Patterson, you're here today as well. The next recognition we have this evening before council is the Community and Economic Development Department's own grant-funded summer youth program. Um, this is the fifth year of this program. And we have six fantastic students and the coordinator of the youth here as well. Um, they've been with the city since July first and have used the past six weeks to get a lot done for the community. Um, they've also had a lunch and learn session with city staff and focused on neighborhood cleanups. Um, their favorite project as well as helping senior citizens with yard work. Um, and have done a lot to beautify parks, public spaces, cleanup graffiti, as well as the garden in the library. A second group, our insurance, has also assisted this summer with the Discover Hamtramck Initiative for the Economic Development Department. And that is working to advertise and promote Hamtramck restaurants and businesses with a social media campaign. So a really great call for you all, and we hope you stay involved with the city. We have Pajwa Ahmed, who's our youth coordinator. Nick Khan as well, who's not here today, but we recognize him. We have Sami Farwa. We have Raken Pulewski. We have Raymond Grill. And Michael Niestack. And my Burton as well. Excellent, thank you, guys.
Isabel, let's bring all the kids up. Mayor, council.
So they're coming around to stand with you and take a photo.
Alright, so done with the presentations. And now we move to additions and divisions. It seems like we have a couple of them.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd like to remove number A to new business.
So I want to move resolution, item A, which is resolution twenty-two-four. It will be one oh-nine.
Okay, and then I'd like to be add the new business.
Okay, I get second for this one.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
I believe we gotta select, make a resolutions. We're specifically though, who, Bob, who are pointing.
Uh, I think when we get to the resolution.
When we get to the resolution discussed.
Uh, well, because right now it's just a blank. It's a common council, the boards and conditions.
When resolution come, will this?
Yeah, when we get there, we can, they can appoint someone and then.
Okay, clear favor.
Then, uh, number S. And then we can, uh, then I'd like to put number S, anyone, you can just get it.
Alright. So the next one, uh, the end dot resolution, it will be S, uh, resolution one-ten. And then you, okay?
And I'd like to be removed.
Uh, let me get the second for that first. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Third one?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be removed, uh, number Q, resolution, and move from the agenda. Resolution twenty-two-four, one way approving street closing to Bundatum Festival.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, no objections. Alright, so, uh, now we have a new agenda. Do we, I think we need a motion to approve the new amended agenda now?
I'd like to make a motion, amend it as it is.
Second, who's seconded?
Yeah.
And all in favor of that?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Uh, now, uh, we move to the public comment.
Did we add the one that I asked for?
We did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's gonna be, uh, S, resolution one-ten.
Okay, yeah, they did. Okay, great.
Alright, public comments, please.
Alright, first up, uh, can we call up Kimberly Fisher? You have, uh, three minutes, Kimberly, and I'll have a timer here. And I'll let you know when there's one minute, thirty seconds and ten seconds as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kimberly Fisher, and I am the new community engagement liaison sent on behalf of, uh, the Wayne County CEO, Warren C. Evans. I sent you guys emails introducing myself individually. And I just wanted to come by and show my face and let you guys know that I am here to support any of the issues that are had in Hamtramck with Wayne County. That can go as far as flooding, street lights, anything that you can think of. Please utilize me to help build our relationship. And if there's anything that you guys would like to share now, I can take back to the CEO. If not, I'm just a phone call or an email away.
Thank you so much for coming. I responded to you, right?
Yes, you did. I did.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
What's this contact number?
Um, let me get it. I just got the phone, so forgive me for not knowing it by heart yet.
Probably need to send it to him instead of reading it.
Yeah, I actually just got it last week, so I apologize. The phone number is three-one-three.
You wanna hand the ten, because we're live on YouTube.
Okay, my apologies.
Thank you so much. Alright, next up, we have Abraham Aldeh.
Good evening. Last month was a couple of weeks ago when Abusum Hamasaid passed away. It's been hard for the community and the stay in the country. Good evening, my name is Ibrahim Aljehim, a resident of this beautiful and safe city. Honorable mayor, Bush chief, manager, council clerk, city attorney. I am here today to ask for speed bumps in the alleyway of the UCC United Community Center located on Conan between Truro Bridge and Beaumont and Masjid Al Khabir. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike Asher.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Mike Asher. I'm a member of the MPS team, Vice President Sales Engineering. I'm here with Sharon Vogt, who also represents MPS. Um, there's gonna be a discussion with Angela, who's gonna talk about some of the research that she's done in a fairly well-researched and well-written paper that she's gonna present here as well this evening. Angela, I had a chance to talk outside and talk about a few of the items within the paper itself. Um, I just wanted to point out that, um, there is no video she mentions in the paper. If you have a chance to read it, that there are video streams that come from the parking meters. Uh, there are no video streams that come from the parking meters. The only images that are captured are still images of license plates. So we had an opportunity to talk a little bit about facial recognition, not so much that, but recognizing people and if there's an opportunity to blur out faces. So we've had a good discussion on that. I'm gonna take that as a, as an item that I can take back to the development team. Um, but the key points there, there is no video. And it's all based on license plates and vehicle detection. So, um, I just wanted to have that discussion. And I think Angela's gonna be following up here shortly, so. And we'll be around after the meeting if anybody has any questions for me to myself or Sharon. Thank you.
Next up, we have Angela S.
Hi, I'm Angela Shaka Gonzalez. I'm a resident of Hamtramck. Thank you both for being here. Um, I submitted a public comment and report to the city council about some things that came up for me as a resident concerned about data privacy of our parking meter system. Um, and specifically, I'm coming from a position of studying ethical use of data in general for a PhD program at the University of Michigan School of Information and also having worked in immigration rights and services. So in general, the report that I sent and that the two representatives of MPS have been very kind to respond to are about how public-private partnerships can be really helpful when we're in need of services like parking. And at the same time, there's a certain amount of loss of control of data in this case that comes with that. So while there are benefits, like possible increased revenue, there are also some risks, which in a city like Hamtramck, where a lot of us are born outside of the United States, a lot of us have darker skin tones. And recognizing that there have been wrongful detentions based on the use of facial recognition technology in combination with images of people's faces with darker skin tones, there are some real concerns about data being shared with law enforcement or immigration, um, enforcement services. So basically, what I do in the report is propose some possible steps to mitigate some of those risks, like including face-blurring technologies in the event that faces are captured by the, um, photos taken by the parking system. Um, another recommendation that I make is, though, city manager has, uh, Max has kindly clarified that the Sentry meters don't actually collect any video footage, which is super helpful, or photos. Um, but if they were to, thank you, an opportunity to, um, remove or cover those eye-level cameras. And finally, in the interest of supporting the city in continuing public-private partnerships, but protecting our local residents' data, creating a local ordinance regarding data retention and use that protects Hamtramck residents' privacy. Because at this time, MPS also kindly mentioned that it can keep data indefinitely until there's a municipal ordinance that can prevent that long-term retention. Um, and that's all I have to say, so thank you for your time. And thank you both for being here.
Next up, we have Sami A.
Salam, everyone. Just have, uh, this is the first time I've been here. Just had a kind of issue with my house taxes. Last year, I bought a Janeway twenty-two-and-three. And taxes was sixteen hundred. Was for the, uh, for the summer taxes. As, I got a letter from the city saying that because I, uh, I have two properties. So instead I went to the city, I had to say that I'm planning on moving because I was doing some work in the new house. There's something between. I know if I paid the taxes, it was sixteen hundred thirty-nine dollars for the summertime. That was last year. And this year went up to six thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. Something, I got a letter from the city before that though. And it was saying it was a wrong address, wrong house, and I get a ticket. Saying, no, I'm sorry. I had a ticket, so it said, come to the court or call. So I called, somebody answered. I says, hey, this is not my house. Get a ticket, this is not my house. So I said, is that a rental? Is that a rental property? I said, no, it's not a rental property. This is my house. And he said, just discard it. Sure, I discard it. And after that, I got this magic number.
So, so how much did you pay when you bought the house?
I paid a hundred thirty-eight thousand cash.
Okay, and then did you renovate it or expand it?
I renovated myself, like inside, nothing out.
So that's, uh, that's not, it sounds like something is wrong. Because if you pay one fifty, the city will come and assess it for. When you pay what, do you add, you said?
Hundred thirty-eight.
So the city will assess it maybe around one hundred tax on fifty percent. So how would it be six?
Careful, because if you paid that much in cash and you renovated it, I mean, how much did you spend in renovating it? I mean, we don't know.
Is it the inside?
We, we don't know what the value of the house is.
Yes, it's like flooring.
What is the, let me see your assessments.
Yeah, so, yeah, communicate with the city manager.
Yeah, I, I, this is outside of public comment, but.
This is what I say, not.
So given your contact information, we will research and see what.
Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Sir. It's assessed at twenty-ten, which says it's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Alright, next up, we have Nasr J. Nasir J.
Awesome, who is he, maybe? Is that?
Uh. Nope. Alright. Next up, we have Akakul Shamim. Uh, next up, we have Khalil Adoais.
Salaam alaikum. Hi, everyone. My name is Khalil Adoais, Voice President for UCC, Al Jammal Khabir. Uh, I agree with, uh, everything Brother Ibrahim Aljehim said about the speed bump for the alley between Truro Bridge and, uh, Beaumont. Because we have students and, uh, the children. And we pray five times in the mosque. So speed too much, much young man, they drive, speed drive in the alley. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, Nasir Al Raiti.
Hello, Abdul. Yeah, we need to put lights. Um, I call it, for our Jammal Khabir, I call it.
You can speak in Arabic if you want, in our translation.
Alashan al-matabat, ala kawret, ala jibayyum alay. Shukran.
So he's talking about the need for speed house, saying, Hami.
Mohammed A. Hashami, Mohammed Hashami.
Hassani.
Hassani, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, yes, my name is Mohammed Hassani. I'm agree with, uh, Mr. Ibrahim Aljehim about the speed bump. It's we needed, because you know, sometimes the speed in that, uh, island, that's really, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And the last public comment we have is Abdo J.
Salaam alaikum. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, City Manager, City Police, City Clerk, and everyone here, City Council, everyone. Uh, my name is Abdul Jawani. I'm the President of the United Committee Center in Conan. Actually, uh, we here today to agree with the brother Ibrahim said and all the brothers said. We asked for, uh, a speed bump because, uh, Truro Bridge, uh, between Truro Bridge and Conan, located in, uh, Conan. Actually, the problem is we have many people going in and out to the mosque. And everybody don't know that. So a lot of people, they drive like crazy in this area. So the safest, the safe way for everyone, the children and the people go inside the mosque, do the speed bump. I think this is, if you don't mind, we could ask you to do that. And thank you so for everything you did. You guys always help us, we need, we need help from you. But we need this help too. Thank you, everyone, and we have the next.
Thank you. Alright, so we've done the public comments, and now we move to the consent agenda. This is approved, and the city motion with no discussion. We have, uh, item A, approval of minutes from the July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, regular city council meeting. B, approval of unboys registered date in the August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending August 13, 2024.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No objections? All right. Now we move to the public hearing. We have one item, Resolution 2024-75B, approving second reading in public hearing of Hamtramck zoning ordinance tax amendment. Chapter 152.
Also.
Mr. Mayor, we have a version that our honorable attorney has changed out on here. There was a couple amendments to the version, the ordinance, not on content per se. So we don't believe it'll put us in a version to the law as far as kicking it back to the Planning Commission, but just some grammar things. But we do recommend that council adopt the version that our attorney changed out, just for clarification purposes.
Literally, it was just like two, it was grammar. It just did, they doubled some words accidentally, removed the double.
Everything is basically same.
Same thing as they want.
Content is the same, just grammar. So if council could just make a motion to adopt that version for the public hearing.
I'll make the motion second.
Then we'd have to open this to a public hear, open this to a public hearing right now?
Yes.
I motion.
So first, you motion to approve the adopted resolution. Second, and everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
Now we can have a motion to open the hearing.
I just.
So, 7:39.
All right, any discussion around this?
Do we have any public comments? Omar, was there any public comments?
Nobody have a public hearing. So the hearing, nobody wants to speak?
Not, not anything. No, okay. Any verbal words? No?
So I have to close the.
Yes. Motion to close.
I motion.
I'll second.
7:40?
7:40.
Okay. Motion approved.
We can.
Or discuss.
Go to.
Now we came as a agenda.
Yeah. So can we vote and make a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion, Resolution Number 2024-75B.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
So it is, I didn't read because I don't have time. It is included as a double fencing, is the back there?
Uh, yes, the fencing was on this. The stuff that got kicked back down to planning, I believe, was the lights and the sign.
Okay.
Double fencing.
Everything else was on it.
Okay, so my, my thing is, me and Sumari was been talking a long time. Double fences, it's still that, it's gonna be approved from today, so no question about it. And other things.
So that's on the sidewalks, though, that's not on the rear alley, just so that we're confused.
We had a discussion about the rear alley, not even site, from the day one.
It depends.
Yep.
It depends, the people who they want.
Yep, that's all, it been discussed. There is, there is no retail over there, only sideline.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay. Dear residents, it is approved officially today. Side and rear double fencing. So any problem, come to see the city manager.
Yes.
So were you saying, are you.
This is covering allowing the double fencing in the sidewalks?
We've removed, we've removed the fact that you can't have double fence anyway. So this, what this does is explain how on the sidewalks, who has to take care of what, how it splits. So the rear isn't covered, it's not mentioned, but it's, we've removed the thing. There was a clause that said no fences allowed, that's been removed. And so.
Mr. Chair. It was the original resolution came for the rear double fencing. This is far away from the original resolution. I'd like to amend the resolution again to bring that word to no restriction for the double fencing rear.
I don't think it's even covered in there from the first passage. I mean, I don't think there was even a prohibition in there.
Okay.
See, but he said, what the council is saying is that he wants it to reference the double fence specifically to allow it.
Yep.
So that there's no question.
It was original resolution.
Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Councilman, so you want the sides and the back?
I don't wanna request for side, I did request for the rear double fencing, excuse me, sir. My original resolution came to the city as a double fencing for the rear.
Oh.
I said, oh, yeah, I didn't even discuss about the site.
So you guys have to bring it back?
I have to be, no, we have to add it.
The planning commission amended it and then set it back down.
Pass this, because this cleans it up, and we can always ask.
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
We can go after, we can.
I.
So the city attorney plans on revisiting other fencing ordinances anyway, because there's more fencing stuff within the code that we gotta clean.
It is three months already been done. I wanna add.
But we're working on this.
No, 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 it was discussion very clear with you, with the resolution. I want Mr. Attorney to advise me each eye, eye, I'm gonna add no restriction for double fencing for the rear. We don't have to go to the planning and zoning for that line.
So, wait, let me. So the issue was with the side, because you have to take permission from your neighbor. The back is okay, I mean, you do it, because nobody's gonna prevent you, right?
Yeah.
But let me read this section for you, because we don't always have to go back to the planning. 155.201, Plan Commission to Review. The common council shall not amend this chapter or map until the proposed amendment had been submitted to the Plan Commission, which has held not less than one public hearing and may be brought thereon. Following the public hearing by the Commission, and upon the common council's receipt of the Commission's report, the common council may adopt the ordinance and map with or without amendments, refer the, or refer the ordinance map again to the Commission. So we can actually make the amendment here without.
Yes, yes, that's one thing.
I mean, to save time.
The city attorney concurs.
Mr. Chair.
It's, it's there. So I researched it last time because we had to send back the early delays and stuff. We didn't have to actually.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
So we can go ahead and amend it.
I'd like to amend the resolution. 2024-75B, add the one more line, I, no restriction for the double fencing rear side.
Second.
All right, so any.
I'd like to.
We have time for the left, for the left. But any restriction for the left or right side?
It's under the open.
It's gonna be everything.
So you can do, you are responsible for maintaining it. You are responsible for maintaining it free of weeds and.
There is no prohibition against double fences in the rear.
Okay, great.
Like, right now, it is allowed, but we're just.
So we just wanna add the line, it's still no issue. So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to bring the amended resolution to the floor.
Second.
All right.
Yes.
All right, so now we can go ahead and vote on the amendment.
We'll just add inner, with this.
Yep.
He explained it.
I just want to recommend people to have at least one inch gap between ground and fence, maybe. So at least when they're trimming, because it's gonna be a lot of, what is called, weeds.
Okay, if it is the too high wood, that will be taken, they already warn about it. We're gonna have a meeting too, so that's all.
To cutting the weed would be more helpful. If you use the.
It's up to them, if they don't cut, they got taken.
I'm gonna guarantee you, having a double fence, there will be weeds in between, and it's gonna be hard for them to cut.
Then they're gonna get taken.
Well, then it should discuss.
Yeah, well, they have to figure out how to, if somebody's interested in doing it, then they have to maintain it.
Just call them for their vote.
All right, you can go ahead and vote on this one.
Mayor Radd?
No. Yes, it's ordinance, so I can vote, yeah, yes.
Councilman Fahri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sutman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Smeiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And just, the Planning Commission approved those recommendations on those other ones.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we did it. All right, so now we start the new business. We have first one, Resolution 2024-92, approving the newly negotiated agreement between CF Hamtramck and the IAF Local 75.
Motion.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have Mr. Hallman here, I have the. I have half the Fire Department here, along with the Union President, Mr. Alexiak. I have Amir here, our Controller. And I'd like to add that this has been a year in negotiations, and I am happy to present a settled, settled Fire Department, City of Hamtramck contract that we are very pleased to present to you for approval tonight. Mr. Hallman, if you want to take the floor?
Thank you, Max, Mayor and Council. You've read the agreement, and we'll go through it step by step. We have negotiated for more than a year at this point. It's, we've been at it for more than a year. It's, what you're seeing is the final product. And it's been months getting there to that final product. So if you have any questions, the floor is open. We've gone through each thing, I think we've negotiated back and forth several times on each item. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I will add that it does knock us out of our negotiated budget. Nothing we, I mean, we passed the budget, there's nothing we can do about that, because we were in negotiations at the time. We will, we will adjust accordingly moving forward. But this does bring us in line, well, not fully in line, but it brings us back to better industry standards for what the firemen should be at with their peers in Metro Detroit. And I hope that the council will pass this tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Hassani, go.
I'm gonna have a few questions, because I've seen City Managers have mentioned something. By the way, I like, I was kind of disagree, but as soon as you speak, you consider both side. That makes sense to me. Second question would be the Finance Director, CFO. I know we hate to amend the budget every time. Anything amendment you bring, we look at you like a, like a, you know, crazy. So how much increase will be the next amendment you're gonna bring to us only for this resolution?
300? Well, the 300,000 is for the whole year. The budget will impact half a year.
So total gonna be 300,000, but you're gonna do the half and the half.
Right.
So we still can do the approximately 300,000.
No, for the budget, it'll only be half.
I know, but it's gonna be next year again.
Right, but next year, we will do the budget.
Well, again, it's gonna come anyway, so that's all.
Well, the impact has been given in the attachments, which is around 300-something for the next four years.
Okay.
Mr. Alexiak, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I definitely like to say something in address the council and the mayor. I've been a firefighter here for almost 20 years in the City of Hamtramck, and I've lived here equally as long. And I've been the Union President for probably about 14 or 15 of those years. And this is honestly the first time in my history that I can recall where we were able to actually have real conversation with the city administration and the Fire Department. And in the past, Councilman Hassan, you know, we've had a rocky past, and Councilman Musa, I mean, we've exchanged words, and, you know, and for many years, we've really been trying to fight to stay as part of Hamtramck. And I think more so recently, some of the councilmen and some of the people that have been here in this city for a long time have actually started to kind of realize, well, maybe they weren't wrong that whole time. Maybe we were getting some bad information. And the reality of it is, you know, the previous administration, as all of you know, and Mayor's spoken to, you know, the previous mayor was having closed-door meetings behind our backs to try to outsource us to the city of Detroit. And when stuff like that's happening, there's no way that we're gonna be cooperative, for lack of a better term. And, you know, we had this lengthy court battle in 2020, and I think this is the first sign of positive growth between the fire union and the Fire Department and the City of Hamtramck. And I really do, I credit, you know, this administration for being able to help put us on the budget trajectory that we're on, because obviously, we can't get things that the city can't afford. And I don't think we, you know, at any point in our negotiations, really, we're out of control asking. We understand, we need the city to be able to survive long-term. If we ask for things that are gonna really financially harm the city, that's not good for us long-term. Every guy in this place, this isn't a job for them, this is a career. And, you know, I got a new guy who came from Detroit, he lives in Hamtramck, and he was making $1,200 take home every two weeks. And his rent in Hamtramck is $1,500 a month, and a $100 water bill, and his electric bill. And I don't even know how, he said he's been dipping in his savings account just to be able to provide service for this city. And I think this is a huge, huge step in the right direction. And are we still underneath our peers? Absolutely. We're never gonna be able to compete with Farmington, well, maybe not never, but Farmington Hills, you know, their total compensation package is $120,000 a year for just a firefighter. Wow, I'm not gonna make that as a lieutenant under this package that we've negotiated. But there's things in here that are going to benefit the City of Hamtramck. You know, we used to do EMS, we know that there's been issues with the private EMS company providing timely service. We are going to start running medical runs in the community again to start filling in those gaps, so people aren't just laying in the streets, waiting for an ambulance for 45 minutes. I think that's a step in the right direction. I think passing this contract is a really huge, good show of faith from this administration. And I can't say enough, I think Max has done a fantastic job. And, you know, he and I have been at each other's throats in the past on many occasions. And I'm proud to say that I think the work that Max, Mr. Hallman, and Amir have done on this, and our executive board has, it's unlike anything I've ever seen before. So we're really looking forward to working with you guys in the future and continuing what we're doing here. Thank you.
Okay, so here's the request, by the way, thank you. It was the hard discussion between us long time ago. Long time ago, we request for $1, we have a disagreement, only $1. So that kind of fight over. We wanna reality, we wanna stick together. That time I had a 3 million shortfall, this time I don't have any. We know expense go up, we understand everything. Very pathetic what you discuss about the new fighter men. So all under consideration, everything, I don't have no issue. All the managers, please, previous practice, any content negotiation, even though elected official cannot speak over there, but their presence was very important. Why that was important? One of the city managers was told us one thing, and inside the counter, she did another thing. So that's why we made a decision, any content negotiation, our elected official, anybody wanna sit over there, they're not enemy, they just wanna see that reality. Or that's all, our request, next time, please, and offer, including manager, any elected official wanna sit with that, thus could be building more relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as you know, I mentioned, the first month when I took the office, I had a meeting with Mayor Duggan of Detroit, surprise visit to here, secret visit. And there was a plan to get rid of you and merge you with Detroit. And then, and then I asked, how much are we saving by doing this? It's only between 300 and 500,000. So I was like, that's not worth the political battle that I'll start now in the first month of my leadership. And so I rejected that. I was requested to respond within two weeks, and I just responded in the same day, and I said, no. So we would love to have, you know, our own Fire Department to serve the city. And we would have to, we would love to have a good relationship with you. However, like you said, if down the road and we have restriction and hardship, financial hardship, we will take tough decisions in the future, not just with the Fire Department, with anything else, with anything else, because the city, if we have to struggle just to pay the pension and the other obligations, we have plans for the future to solve these issues to cause burden on the city. So we wanna make you happy, we wanna make you just...reward you just like any other department, you know, other cities. And hopefully we can afford that down the road for many years and continue to have this good relationship with you.
Mr. Mayor, one of the articles I read, they can roll back all their vacation days or sick days to next year. I mean, this against the excessive, I mean, then how many people...
I think that's only...
...few days the guy's gonna have.
It's only applicable to one person. And the reason why is he's our Fire Marshal. So firefighters typically work a fifty-point-four-hour work week. The Fire Marshal, so we work twenty-four-hour shifts. When you get promoted to Fire Marshal, because he's supposed to be just do business hours, he works forty hours. So the time that he accumulates when he's on twenty-four hours doesn't translate to when he goes to forty hours, so there's an adjustment being made to compensate for that. So that's only applicable to that one employee.
We're trying to make sure that by virtue of being promoted, he wasn't getting punished.
Because essentially, he was losing days.
Also, for a small city like us, eighteen percent, I mean, a new person, you know, I worked on eighteen, I get, I've been in the negotiation many time, but eighteen percent down the four years, it's kind of aggressive for our small city, but I mean, it is what it is.
Well, I think frankly, we're about thirty thousand dollars below market value, almost twenty-five to thirty thousand on starting wages.
But if you go to Detroit and other cities, it's more...
Sort of interrupt.
No, and I think also this goes in line with what's coming next for the Police Department, and I don't wanna be out of line speaking on that because it's not really my purview, but generally, the cops and the Fire Department are somewhat equal in terms of pay in a contract. And we have a serious retention problem with the Police Department, I don't think anybody can, you know, deny that, and that's a step to fixing that. And we have the same problem in the Fire Department where, you know, it used to be a coveted job, and now we're getting two qualified applicants maybe apply because there's openings everywhere, everywhere. You could go to any Fire Department and basically get a job making a lot more money right now. So that's why it's necessary. And we looked at what the market trends were for comparable cities, what cities like East Point, Hazel Park, Ypsilanti had given, I think Ypsilanti was at like twenty-one percent over a four-year period. So when we look at where we were as far as what we would call our comparables, it was certainly in line with them.
The markets definitely went up significantly in public safety, which I am happy to say, but we are vastly behind in this area now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Hassan.
I went, you know, through the contracts. I don't have no argument with the contract. I asked them to our City Manager that sooner or later we need to have in-house EMS. So I'm hoping that few years in time, that we can bring this back to our city somehow, at least we can save money paying this third-party company that does crap work in our city. So hopefully, within time, should...hopefully, it should not take that long for us to get our people back to EMS.
I can honestly...
One to two units. I think it's time to get, you know, back to service in the City of Hamtramck.
Councilman, I can honestly say that through our negotiations with the Chief, the City Manager, City Attorney, and the Finance Director, that that is being discussed. That is the hopeful, long-term plan. But, you know, this isn't...that's not something you just wanna jump into. We have been out of it for a while, and we do have a contract with that company, but it is something that we are looking at for the future.
This contract does take a first step in that direction.
All right, sounds good. Chair?
Yes, uh...
Thank you, City Manager, CFO, and Marshal to get the contract. You are owner of our home, that's what City Manager, our City Manager told us before.
I'm sorry.
You are one of our home.
Yes.
The City Manager, Mayor already talked to you, told us regarding the Mike Dugans tried to buy us, but he, same day, he said, no, we don't wanna argue with you. This is the way, we like you, we like to...our Police Department and Fire Department. So yeah, I'm very happy to get this contract, and we hope, continues, we can keep doing those things, good stuff for the city.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. In the meantime, you guys hire so I can apply.
You all should have liked.
You're welcome to come and ride along with us anytime, any one of you guys. We'll talk to the Chief, we'll get you suited up.
Just go direct dinner.
All right, I guess we can go ahead and vote, Omar, on this one.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Smei?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Be happy.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, sir.
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 Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck for everything, we'll keep it. All right, thank you. Now we move to Resolution 2024-93 approving appointment of Abdul Rahman as City Attorney.
Motion? Second. Mr. Mayor, I have Mr. Rahman here.
All right. Good evening, gentlemen.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
You can introduce yourself, please.
Sure. My name is Abdul Rahman. I grew up in Hamtramck, I went to Hamtramck High School, graduated in two thousand.
Really? You were my classmates.
Oh, probably. Then went to Chicago for college, university. I graduated from DePaul University, majoring in finance, minor in accounting. So been in the accounting industry literally over fourteen years, and I'd like to join this great city.
Thank you for your interest to serve the...
Sir?
Yes, by Councilman Hassan.
Okay, so nothing to you, sure to, Omar. Mr. Manager, there is some discussion I'm hearing outside. I just wanna ask you one question honestly. I was not in the interview board. So this is the highest score person came, the name came to resolution?
Yes.
So I leave everybody down professionally, and the score being down, highest score qualified person came here in front of us, and I'm okay with that, I have no issue.
You are correct.
Thank you. I guess the people who had some objections were concerned about reposting the job online, that was the concern. After we, they wanted to do the process, and then City Manager was forced to repost, that was the concern from some people. But now we're happy that the other gentleman who was about to be appointed is being hired now for another position, right? So we ask everybody happy, so...
Which position?
The account, another account, yeah, excuse me, another accountant position is open.
Does it create it, or does...
It's open.
That's great.
Yep. All's well that ends well.
Yeah, so I guess everybody's happy, hopefully, I mean, we're happy to have you too. Thank you so much for, you know, your interest to serve the city. And good luck in your new job. Thank you. All right, I guess we can go ahead and vote now.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Smei?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next one is Resolution... Next one is Resolution 2024-94 approving site plan for 8610 Conant.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have his bill, his application.
Good evening again.
Yeah.
Brandon's going to help me pull up some visuals. If we could do the site plan drawings that are linked in the agenda.
Which one, what, first, 8610 Conant Street, can we do?
Yes. Not the review, the report, but just the drawings themselves. Well, he's pulling that up as a visual. I'll interview, I'll overview the project, which is at 8610 Conant Street. It's currently an empty lot with a lot of potential. We have a application here, a proposed site plan to build a five commercial unit building with storage above, may be familiar to some of you because they have been through several iterations of this project, through no fault of their own, with some external circumstances having to revise due to city water pressure issues, which have been resolved. And those conditions associated with those resolutions are in our report and review that you have looked at, Council. So we have on page one of the site plan report, this overview of what the building will look like. On page two, Brandon, if you could scroll, that provides a view of both floors of the building. I wanna note one of the conditions that CED recommends due to that water pressure issue I mentioned, they're going to formalize the discussions we've had with the applicant and their architect for the short construction, do not install bathrooms in the upstairs pending resolution of the city's water pressure problems. But we want to clarify that they would have potential to do it in the future with their build when it is resolved. They have all the variances they need, they have worked with the Fire Marshal regarding fire access on the site, which if you scroll to page three, Brandon, please, that details the traffic flow pattern. Seventeen parking spaces provided, even though there's not a parking requirement in this multi-use district, and they are in compliance with all the other major aspects of the site plan review process. I'll just note that my predecessor, Carolyn, worked with them for years to get this proposal to its current state, and we're, we have full confidence in it, and we appreciate their hard work and dedication to the development. And we recommend that Council adopt it with the conditions that we detail in the report. So our applicant's currently out of the country, but I believe Ali's son was lucky here as a representative, if you'd like to come up. So any statement on behalf of your father you'd like to make? You're welcome to do so.
Just hoping you guys can help, that's all.
Who's the name of the owner?
Ali's husband.
Ali, the Yemen Cafe?
Honor of the Cafe, yes.
We're really excited about this development, that little bit area down there is sorely, sorely needed to develop.
What is it between, Oliver and Dorothy?
Yeah.
Brandon, if you could pull up the, our site review, the actual report, we can show just a photo of where it currently is, the property.
Between this coming and Z Box and just the general, bringing up to that area, it's really people.
That's the current state of the lot, empty and ready for something to be there, so...
Is it good for that?
Yeah. And we certainly support the developer here. I mean, as you know, we're in developments with Parks and Servency, and then another project in the last meeting, right now for the patio right next to the Yemen Cafe as well, so we definitely have a history with them.
Okay, no issue.
Ballot vote? Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Smei?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution 2024-95 approving purchase of multi, multiple mini split unit for the City Hall and new furnace AC unit for Police Chief and Administration offices.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, I got John to speak on this. I'll just summarize it to try and help him out here. We kind of put them all together here to try and consolidate, because as you know, we've already got a long agenda, and we didn't wanna be here all night. These units only total fifty-seven together, but they're paid for multiple areas. The Police Department will come out of Narcotics Funds, part of it's being paid out of the courts. The only portion of this that would be out of the general fund would actually be for the Elms and Chambers, which as you know, we've asked for a couple times. We're trying to modernize our Elms and Chambers here. We're kind of over the wall units in here, which are loud and inefficient, and frankly, we wanna update the windows in here and get it a little bit better for climate control in this, in this office, so we do pray that we can pass this back once and for all. So, John, do you wanna add upon that?
Yeah, and one of the units, the Furnish Unit, right now is just, it's broke, totally not working at all in this apartment.
Oh, yeah.
That's gotta, that's gotta go. And then the records, the records room, they're always complaining about how cold it is in the winter, they wanna put electric heaters in there and warm up, so that's not, they don't get hardly any heat there. So the only rooms that I really put on there is what we really kind of need, and then this room, because those things are noisy. The mini splits are a lot quieter, you don't even hear a lot.
How's your search?
Yes, sir. That was much time.
Okay, it's funny that we talked about this with the Council many, so many times, and it's always been denied. I don't know who's smart enough to add actually the same combine where Police Department's paint, where it's on itself, kinda sneak, first city council. You know, I know the reasons that we have right now, those socks, they're not, you know, they're not good enough. They make noises, but the amount of these units, it's expensive, so I'm just kidding.
It is doing the other two rooms behind here too, so that's why it seems a lot, but we're getting actually a three-head unit.
Why we're getting two more units for these, for behind us?
Because I can put them all off of the same condenser, which is great, instead of somebody trying to add it later, and you gotta buy another condenser. We can get bigger units, do multiple areas, it's like the ID room, the Police Department's doing two areas off one condenser. So it's actually a lot more cost effective to do it that way.
Well, if we get one condenser and one, and the system, how much will that cost? And then in the future, if we need those, you still can add.
You'll be double the amount, because you have, you can't use that same condenser then. Condenser size based on how many head units it is.
So we try to consolidate as we do them, like, you know, if we do a stretch of rooms, we try to get them. I mean, at the end of the day, we're trying, we're trying to do all of City Hall to get rid of all these wall units and professionalize it and make it better.
And get rid of the wall.
We don't want window, window units hanging off of the side of City Hall, a professional building. They're inefficient, they're old, they're antiquated, and just not a good look. You know, and at some point, you know, we want these units to cover the range of City Hall, to cool it properly, and if this is designed for these three buildings, and the EMS across the hallway, and the probation is, you know, designed properly, now we've essentially done this floor, and most of the first floor are complete, you know, so if we just do this room across the hall, and we skip those two rooms, and then we do the Traffic Office, now we've got a gap, you know, so, you know, let's get the one little section here in the middle, you know, so that the cooling is done properly.
I think it's a choice of way to add to cool it, or attention for these two rooms.
Well, the one room is...
Barely being used.
Is used. I mean, it is, it's tend to be used, I mean, there's, they're used nonetheless, but they are also left open, and the cooling from that does not, the one room is left open, and the cooling does not stay in there, it does drift into the hallway, which helps to cool the hallway as well. So, I mean, you know, let's face it, you know, the heating and air doesn't stay in one area, you know, I mean, it cools the rest of City Hall.
The good thing is we can eventually get rid of the boiler, which will be the ultimate goal, and the boiler broke down last year, and we were out, City Hall's getting colder because we never had boilers. So the third floor, as I said, had some furnishing, that's, you know, so where these things are now starting to scatter throughout City Hall, the boiler goes down, we're not gonna be in a 911 situation.
Trying to get rid of antiquated systems here and modernize City Hall.
Why is, why is concern, can you have individual controlling system?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's not my concern, my concern was, why add two more units, then it costs the city... to, barely anybody's in. That's my, yes.
But he's talking about the deals, or if you want to.
Yeah, it, the, the cost save is about seventy-five percent doing it now, over trying to add it later, because we're just upsiding with more tonnage on the condenser unit, the heads amount then are not really the causing, causing part of it.
Well, this is, this is my concern, so it depends on my calendar.
Well, Mr. Councilman, I agree with you, but no matter what, he's going to come again, I guess, unless we have to.
We could deny it.
And then, we can deny, but it's going to come again, but realistically, what he is speaking, I can't subagree with that, because of the, he putting together, that's what's selling some money. So this is the last one we have. Some of them already being discussed, approved previously.
Very inexpensive to run too, which is nice. It's a lot cheaper to run than these wall, the window units. They run at fifteen ampere.
They're not going to come anymore, right?
How many rooms is still empty, last of this issue? How many rooms in the whole building is still empty?
You don't have, there's not really that much treasury, treasury and, and then payments off his tax.
So don't bring them this year.
We're trying to do a lot of it every year, so.
He's going to stop, he's going to.
Well, we have the stuff coming down now in the next resolution, so.
Yeah. I should have started with the other ones.
That's the way to move for both, if anybody wants to vote, because we have a last resolution to vote for.
We can figure it out, we can figure it out, we can talk discussion, if this issue is wrong, it's going to keep going every time, same thing.
Yeah.
This is big wrong. How many units we did already now? If you figure it out, if you put one unit for the whole place.
Oh, you can't do one unit for the whole place?
You can do the whole place. How about the thirty, thirty flat, one unit? This is big difference.
These are, these are just centralized four of those areas, that's what's makes it nice about doing a mini split system, is because we're not relying on one unit goes down, you're down for the whole city. These, if we, you can break, two of them can be down on this floor, and other, other offices have them, we still have heat, we still have cooling going, it's not a nine-one-one getting it fixed, so.
Because now, how many units we did already, how much they cost? They goes over and over. Okay, keep going, get, brok with our, next month, we got different issue. We spend more money, same thing.
It's a very old building.
We got to figure it out now, fix this issue right now. Like every time, come up with a new issue.
Councilman, this is an old building, there is always going to be.
Save the whole building.
All right.
Guess I'm.
We spent, we spent two years almost for one building.
How much you donated?
Fix this window, fix this door, fix this.
How are you doing?
Councilman Sumeri, you're going to keep it live.
Sustained the law, please, Councilman.
That's now, that's what I'm going to speak in.
Councilman Farai?
Nope.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumeri?
No.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Resolution number two.
Thanks.
We'll see him again now.
I'll be back, I'll be back. Give me hope.
All right, the next one is Resolution twenty-two-four-nine-six, approving acceptance of Pantrymick Stadium historic preservation easement.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Mr. Havitz here to speak on this.
Could you read a run? This was one of the main sources of funding for the restoration of Pantrymick Stadium, the African-American Civil Rights Grant. Just to close out that grant, this is a historic easement, that's a requirement for spelling out that this city is going to continue to maintain the stadium. There are no specific requirements in there, it's more about generally making sure that it's kept up well, and it remains open to the public, just hasn't been, had been maintaining it. So the next item we're going to have is related to future plans there, but this is particular, just kind of maintaining it the way it has been.
All right.
Councilman Farai?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumeri?
Ah, yes.
And Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty-two-four-nine-seven, approving amendment number two to the grant agreement between Wayne County and the City of Pantrymick for the Pantrymick Stadium Restrooms.
Oh, second.
Mr. Mayor, Tom can kind of speak to this one too, but I can also as well. Basically, we're, we're, because Tom has been assisting greatly and moving us forward on the bathroom restoration project, we basically need more time with the bathrooms, I mean, a further extension with Wayne County, and we're, Wayne County's granting us more time. But I am happy to report that we've made some significant progress here recently with the DNR grants, which we have been frankly pulling our hair out. They are more than complicated, and, but we, we made headway and finally got verbal approval from, from the DNR to go ahead and get the bidding going on that. So, Tom, anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, just really excited for this project. There's eight funding sources that are going into it, some of which need to be spent by December thirty-first. This Wayne County one was expiring by the end of September, so we're going to get a year extension on that. But the project is really exciting from the standpoint that it's going to bring permanent restrooms to the park, they'll be located under the baseball stadium, it's also going to help to bring storage space into there, redo the outfield with drainage, and a sprinkler system, et cetera. So a lot of construction going on. As Max said, we'll be able to go out to bid very shortly, and then be under construction, how we hope, still this fall, and wrap that up within a few months, allowing us to spend out all those grants by the end of the year. And then by next spring, we'll be able to resume utilization of the baseball field and have it open for community use.
The, the amount of the funding and this, this many grants into this one, the complexity of it is just very, very difficult. I mean, you know, normally we have one, maybe two grants on a project, this one is driven very, very fastly.
So we're starting construction on the floor, right?
Yeah, so we just got kind of verbal approval to be able to go up for bids, so of course, the project's being managed by HEDC, but when we get into construction, we'll come back before council to approve the construction contract, so hoping at one of the, the next meetings, we'll be in a position to do that.
Thank you. Bye. All right, we can vote.
Councilman Farai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumeri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution twenty-two-four-nine-eight, approving award of twenty-two-four ARPA, ARPA lead service line replacement program.
Over. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have John and John here to talk about the next few. These are lead service line replacements. This one is Belmont and Yemen Street award.
And Mayor Council, this kind of follows the fifteen million dollar grant that we've received, all of these fundings are completely eligible under the grants.
All right, so is it Belmont and Yemen, the whole street, or just specific block?
The entire street, you'd believe, that that's through the whole street.
Look, we already did some of it.
Yes, we did some, it'll wrap up, it'll complete those streets.
So is this, I honestly have an answer for you on that, Mayor?
It's a hundred and forty-two service lines on Belmont from Chrysler Drive to Joseph Campo, and then it will replace fifty-five leads on Yemen's from Lumpkin to Bramba.
Okay.
Mr. John? How come we're moving from zones to zones again? I thought we discussed this year ago that we're supposed to work on sections, and now we started like, what is it, South Stand, now we're dropping now hallway two?
Where we, there, there is water main projects that we're actually doing, and these are independent service leads that we're just attacking to, to the water main themselves, they're not water projects. And so they're a little bit different, and we want to make sure that we don't have a progress problem with the contractors conflicting with each other through there. There's quite a bit of work going on within the community, as everyone is well aware, and that's why we selected those streets. And we actually did this with Eagles, because this is all funded by Eagle as well.
Okay, I'm a scared because.
Sure.
We didn't mention.
Yeah, when we can do them in quadrants, we do, and we have the choice to pick them all out. But wherever we do a new water main, we're automatically going to go in and use some of the Eagle funding to change out the lead service lines. So we're doing it, not inconveniencing that resident twice, because we can put the main in and the service line.
All right. John, do you have any appeal for, can you, sorry, can you see? Do you want to develop, just a little bit of any appeal?
From over here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to be up here for the next six or so. Yeah, we have six, seven resolutions.
All right, thank you, all right.
Um, let's switch it around a little bit. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sumeri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
And Councilman Farai?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution twenty-two-four-nine-nine, approving award of twenty-two-four ARPA lead line, lead service line placement program.
Motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, again, gentlemen, this is for Trowbridge.
That's right, this is for, Mayor Council, this is for a hundred and forty-eight leads on Trowbridge, from Joseph Camp, or, excuse me, from Chrysler Drive to Joseph Campo.
When am planning to start this job?
Uh, as soon as we, we get the award this evening, we'll send out contract books, we anticipate that they would start by close to September one. They have to get insurance back to us, contract books, and get it to the clerk and the attorney's office, there's some administrative work that has to get done, but we're searching, or starting September one is our goal, finish this year with all of these projects.
Mr. Chair?
You know, I have a concern, how come it always work in the winter? You got snow, it's created, and you have to.
There's no way the award, Eagle lets us do with the bids. Yeah, it's. There's nothing to do with us. They're the funding source, and the mayor can.
Yeah, I think, Councilman, in this particular case, the approvals that we got from the state and Eagle just came in recently. So we knew about this since six months, that we, we'll be getting this money, but the final written approval just got us, so that we had to scramble. Yeah, that's just the way it stayed works.
All, all the projects that we could get going have been going, I mean, we've been doing a lot of stuff, right now.
Canif's the whole, that's the same here with Canif, not being done, but on Eagle.
You know, if, if we get delayed by things that are out of our control, we can't, but if we can push them through, we do. I mean, we were on the phone to the state, you know, trying to push them along, I mean, but there's only so much we can do.
And then, you know, once the state approves it, it goes to Eagle for implementation from their end, and then Eagle sends us a lot of requirements that we have to fulfill before they give us their approval to go ahead with the project. So now that we have received their go-ahead, now we're bringing it to the council.
It's open, it's not from our end.
No, no, it's not, it's not, we have been trying to force it as much as we can.
Believe me, Councilman, yeah, we, we'd rather deal with the IRS rather than Eagle. I, I don't think Eagle expected us to be so vigilant and, and pushing lead service line replacements, we're, we're doing only three hundred and something a year, and we're scheduled to do seventeen hundred. I want to get this.
John's actually been speaking for Eagle now, like, like, because we're doing so many of these, like, they're, we're on their radar.
Sure. They recognize us as, just go and get this program done, it's, I want to get it done. So they had me speak at Mount Pleasant, and tell the communities what we're doing here, so.
So we've, we've got their attention, so, I mean, it helps for getting our stuff through, but we're still on their timelines.
All right.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumeri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Farai?
Yes.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty-two-four-one-hundred, approving award of the Water Service Imperial Investigation.
Motion. Second.
And this is a requirement by Eagle, we have two hundred and eighteen service leads throughout the city of Pantrymick, we have to do a three-point inspection as part of a statistical analysis to determine exactly what, how many lead service leads we have. We literally encounter lead service leads almost at every, every residence, but this is money provided to us, and we're, keeps, keeps us in compliance with Eagle to do this inventory management.
Biggest ways to do the money. That's, John and I have had many discussions about this, but it's their money, and we have to use it.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Farai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumeri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty-two-four-one-oh-one, Resolution to award of ARPA, LSLR, and Trail Investigation Construction Services.
Motion.
Second.
And this is just the oversight and compliance for the grants that we worked with, with the mayor on and John on, and this is covered again by the fifteen million that we have within the grant, which was all laid out in the original grant award.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Sumeri?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Farai?
Yes.
All right, next is Resolution twenty-two-four-one-oh-two, approving the reconstruction of two alleys with the recommendation to extend Comnik, Dragu, Construction Corporation Alley and Circuit.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor and Council, definitely excited about this one. This would be the north and south Goodson alleys between Lumpkin and Joseph Campo, as we discussed with council in the previous meetings. As everybody knows, we're getting ready to rip out Goodson in its entirety, and our hope is to do the alleys just prior to that, so that our residents have somewhere to go while we do that very long project. And this is a good first step to get in that whole area if we don't. This will come out of the sewer fund to do, those alleys are in desperate need of this, I don't think they've been used properly in many, many, many years. So I think we're probably going to amaze our residents over there when we do this, so it's a pretty big deal, and we're excited for this one.
Mr. Chair, what are you guys wanting to start doing with the alleys, exact date?
When Dominic is doing the Canif Alley, currently right now, the South Canif Alley, we get approval tonight, he's going to move right over into that.
So what is that?
Probably within two weeks. He's staying within the city.
Yeah, within two weeks.
Yeah.
We're hoping after that, so maybe even be able to shift him right behind City Hall.
Yeah, we're talking to Dominic about that, to see what his capacity is, but we scheduled this at this date specifically, that as soon as he finishes Canif, he's staying in the community. Those alleys are very complex to manage, they, they need a lot of work. There's a lot of sewer issues there, and that's why it's getting covered under the water. So we got. Because we have to fix the sewer issues in both those alleys. And to make the mayor and council aware and the public, we're doing the alleys within the next two weeks, and we'll kick those off, we'll do those, finish those, then we're doing the water main in the fall, and then the sewer will happen in the, in the early spring, late winter.
My advice to you is just let the residents know what you're doing.
Oh, we will.
For a hand, what you guys have to have, like you guys did on all of the street, not on all the houses, you guys need somebody that speaks Arabic about snow.
Okay, well, we have actually a number of people within our organization that speak Arabic.
All right, good, here, that's one million dollar project, yes, all right, we can go[1719.88] We can go on the board.
Councilman Sumari?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Moussa?
Yes.
And Councilman Fahri?
Yes.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2024-103, approving award of the 2024 Goodson alleys reconstruction design construction services.
Motion? Second.
So that's related to the first one?
And that's obviously just construction services through there.
All right, Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Fahri?
Yes.
Councilman Moussa?
Yes.
Councilman Sumari?
Ah, yes.
And Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All right. Next one. Resolution 2024-104, approving the purchase of the 2023 EQ26702 camera chassis for Transit 350 van.
Motion? Second.
All right. What is this one? We need to. What camera are you talking about?
So originally, last year, I wanted to buy a transit van, a televising van for our sewers and everything, for $300,000. So we, when I figured I'd phase it, I bought the camera system. We spent about 120 on the camera system. And we still had to get a vehicle to put it in. I've been watching for cities that order the van and don't take delivery of it. There's one down in Texas. City canceled it, there's no camera system in it. So we can actually get the unit at a discount, it's new. And we're gonna, they're gonna outfit our equipment that we bought last year and put it into this van. Between the two, doing it that way, it's only 220,000 over both purchases, instead of spending 300,000 to buy the van. I knew we'd be able to do it cheaper if I went direct. And that's basically it. If we bought the camera system last year, get the van this year.
Okay, how much did the van cost?
117,000.
117,000.
How?
Why that much money?
Well, I, you guys have the.
Yeah, we have.
The pictures of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the van themselves are about 50, 60,000, not counting the stuff that's in it on the cap.
2,040. I already have the my van, has the camera system and everything, same one. Yeah, very excessive. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So John, you're telling me you want to purchase this van just to add the camera that we have purchased? No.
Yeah, we have, we have the, we have the camera system right now.
Yes.
It's not in a vehicle. It's an outpost box.
Can I recommend that we have enough pickup trucks? So why not add a box, one of those pickup trucks, just to use it for the camera system?
Well, we'd have, well, we don't have a truck for it. We'd have to buy, still have to buy a truck for it. And then you're still limited on when you can use it. Our alley, our, actually, our jetting system and our televising system has been working here. We got the jetter truck out, we have the, we have the guy that can operate the equipment. We have two national maintenance people that we hired that worked all day just in that jetter truck. And that's the companion vehicle for the jetter. So, and we've actually brought back revenue already from the jetter truck. We've rented it out with our guys. We already did $9,000 just in the last couple of months, helping out other companies. So this is equipment that not only we need with all the projects we've got going on, and we, we had a $2 million televising grant with Tennessee, I think John was. Yeah. So this is something that we gotta do anyways. So we can do it. We have the talent in the city to do this. But we need, they have to have a place where they can view it. Our system is so advanced that they can send this camera out. It sends a Wi-Fi signal out, right where the problem is, we put an X-ray, we know right where to dig. They sit right in the van and print out the maps and everything. When you're trying to operate out of a back of a ranger, you're only limited to weather conditions. And so it's usually a lot of times you do this, it's nasty out. So you can only use it when it's nice. So, and it's secure. That camera's 120 grand, and just to be sitting with the backs of a pickup truck, it's not a good thing.
Well, my question again, why are Ford vans at 350? Why, because you get a normal one? So you went to, you went to the ITOP?
No, actually, I didn't, no, these things.
So you have to.
These things go up to half a million. I picked the vehicle that fits the equipment that we got that was best suited for that equipment. Because you have, you have the wheels, the camera wheels on it and everything. So eventually, when we, you know, talked before, we're gonna get the sewer system anymore, we'll probably need another jetter truck though. It's working. What we're doing is working. We're getting the dirt out of the sewers, our full, one-third full.
Maybe if you reach out to Councilman Hassan, he could give you the A1 discount.
So the same vehicle I priced out with other, other vehicles, it would be about 300,000 if we bought it outfitted already from them. So, so it's a huge saving.
Since we get, it's easy to get some grants for the sewer, water and sewer system, and not for anything else like alleys and other stuff. This has to do with the sewer system. So I think we apply for grants for such things, like we apply for the fire engine and other stuff.
They don't, we, I've tried that, they don't cover equipment, you know? Because we tried that with the sweepers, we're under roads and water, but this would be, this could be covered under the water, enterprise funds, yes.
What would this add to, to the, to the work that you are doing with the jetter truck that you have? How is this gonna?
Make our employees' lives easier.
It's, it's a lot easier and it's a lot more efficient when you have somebody in the vehicle watching the monitors. Because when you park on outside and trying to view it on the outside, one, it's gotta be the proper weather condition, and two, if the sun is coming, you gotta change your vehicle around. It's just a nightmare. And everybody I've talked to in these departments doing this, you're better off having it in a van, and it's secure. That's, we got, with the options of little things I've picked up over time for the system, you got 150,000 dollars into the camera. And it's gonna be bouncing around in the back of the pickup truck. You know, they just take it, take it away.
Yes. So we have a camera equipped around 150,000 dollars, am I right?
We have all the technology.
We bought those, those, we don't, we don't have any secure pickup.
Right now, it's locked in our.
We bought the camera without a secure pickup.
We don't have a vehicle for it, right?
So we should buy the secure pickup first, and camera to be there also. But we bought the camera without our secure pickup. This camera could be damaged on the truck, am I right?
Oh, if you just put it in the back of a pickup truck? Yeah.
This could be damaged.
It could be damaged. You can't, we can't take it out when there's certain weather conditions, if it's raining, snow, icy. So you're limited on when you can take it out. The van is nice, because it goes in the van, the van gets locked in a building at night, and nobody's messing with it.
Now kind of you're telling us, buy the van, because your camera will be secured, otherwise it's not secured, and you cannot walk efficiently.
I think Councilman trying to say that, why didn't you combine same time? Why did you think of, if you did the camera and the vehicle?
I look at the budget here, and I'm trying to phase the, the expensive items that we need. I don't want to try to blow the money all at one time. I'm trying to stage my budget, so I bought the camera system, we got a good deal on the camera system. And if, I knew we'd be able to get some kind of van at some point. I'm not actually, didn't, wasn't even the one that found the van, actually, our, our EPAS guys did. They went to a trade show, and they were talking about the camera system we had, and they said, you know, you should do something like this. And then they got a call saying that, it's in Texas, this vehicle's in Texas. A city ordered it, they canceled it before they put the electronics into it. So they called and said, what kind of camera system did you say we had? We told them what we had, and they said, we could outfit that van with your equipment. And you're gonna save a lot of money doing that way, because I'm not going through a, a second party and blowing rates of manufacturing. So if I would have bought the van, came to you last year, and would say, let me buy 300,000 dollar van, went 300,000. This way, you add them both up, we're still at like 220. So it's still, so, it's a lot better.
I mean, looking at the outcomes of using this, you know, jetter and all this, I don't know. I mean, we said it's helpful, but we heard about when the rain came, when everybody was complaining in every street about the flooding. So I'm not sure how beneficial is this and how productive it is if we just keep spending money. Now that we saw additional 300 and something in the fire department, similar amount will be added to the police department. So I'm sure our budget will be under pressure by keeping adding stuff.
Well, this is, this is a protected fund. This isn't out of the general fund. I would say that. But with, with that said, we also don't know how much we're preventing as well. I mean, I could say in years past, when it rains hard, you know, you could sail a boat down every street in the city.
No, John, we had.
It's been raining really hard the past couple of years, and we're getting complaints of flooding. But it doesn't seem like it's been as complaining as it's been. It seems like it's been helpful, so.
And this, this also, as John kept by speaking.
Yeah, we have some bad areas. We know it's gonna keep flooding, because we have a, we have an issue over there, they were yelling at it. There's some other hotspots, but.
We had a $2 million, we were gonna go for a $2 million loan due to the televising.
At one point, that's right. And I would make the mayor and council aware that we did save quite a bit of money through the water and sewer fund for the Phase 1B. That was funded completely by FEMA, so there is some money within the fund to, to approve this if the council so desires. I, it's, it's very beneficial to have something like this in the middle of a rain event, to be able to have a protected work area to work in for the community. You, you really don't see anybody using cameras outside of back of a pickup, candidly.
So that money that we saved can be utilized for this?
That's correct, Mayor, yes. That we saved from the FEMA grant that we received, the, the money from, the millions of dollars from FEMA for Phase 1B.
Plus, we're gonna have to take out the $2 million loan, which we were gonna take out to do televising. So we, we, we asked that.
Yes.
I think this is kind of a drop in the bucket compared to all the grants.
117,000 compared to $2 million loan, it's a huge savings.
You want a boat?
Councilman Fahri?
No.
Councilman Moussa?
No.
Councilman Sadman?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumari?
I don't know.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry, I didn't pass, but.
Take him, okay, you can.
You can visit it again like we did.
Find the cheap one.
All right.
I think Councilman Hassan is writing.
I'm telling you, use his.
I can help you.
Can you help?
Oh, yeah, yeah, why not?
Use his AZ five.
All right. The next one is Resolution 2024-105, adopting the legal construction permit and change order procedure for the city contract.
Motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we talked about how Eagle makes us do a lot of things on their timeline. This is another thing Eagle is making us do, is adopt their regulations. This is a formality that they're making us adopt their stuff. So if we can please bless their policy, we would appreciate it.
These are policies that we follow initially anyway, so it's just kind of an administrative issue to codify their policies.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sumari?
Yes.
Councilman Moussa?
Yes.
Councilman Fahri?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. You called his name.
Councilman Hassan?
Call you, huh?
Thank you. All right.
Resolution passing for 2024-105.
Thank you. Next one. Resolution 2024-106, approving the proposal to repair the, repair and modernize the Hanterick City Hall South Elevator.
Motion? Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I have John to speak in regards to this. As we speak about quite frequently, we're in a 100-year-old building here that is deteriorating. Frankly, we've been limping our elevator along for a very long time. I'm not gonna speak directly in regards to the life expectancy of our elevator. There could be, you know, liability, and I have the attorney sitting next to me, or the various occasions we've had. But I will say that I don't take it. But the professional advice is that we need to replace it. So, John, if you want to add to that?
Yeah, and the, the problem with this is, if it goes, we won't get it fixed for over a year. That's the problem. Approving this today, we won't see this for a year. That's unfair back there, so.
So we are just repairing it, not replacing it?
No, well, this is, when they, this isn't really a repair. This is a whole new car. They'll keep the counterweight. It's actually cheaper to put a brand-new one in, but we have a building around it now, so that's why it's expensive. So we're basically building a whole new elevator, but doing it on the inside of the building. It's gonna be out six, six weeks to eight weeks, maybe when they do it. But if it goes out tomorrow, we're in trouble.
So for, for just three floors, it costs 343,000?
Yeah. And this is from a handy source, this is municipal pricing, given the low bidders throughout different cities in the country. And if, like I say, it just, we're setting time bomb with it. So I'm trying to address it. They've warned me every time they come out, saying, you gotta get this thing replaced, because if it goes, you're done. It's not something to just call them up and say, fix it. It's, it's gonna be, we're gonna order an elevator, and we're gonna wait almost a year to get it.
Mr. Chair? And we know most of the people who use the elevator are usually people that are coming to court or pay tickets. Is there a way that the court could?
Yeah, the court's gonna contribute.
This will be partially out of the court budget as well.
How much will it weigh?
A percentage, yet to be exactly determined. We're gonna have to negotiate it with the court how much the judge wants to pay.
It all, sorry, it depends on how much money they have in their fund, which is not a whole lot. So the majority of the cost is still going to be borne by the city.
Do you have any God available for those programs?
What was that, Councilman?
Any God available for those programs?
No, no grants.
I, nothing, nothing in the line right now.
I don't think grants would.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Can you use any infrastructure money from, no?
I don't know.
They don't like doing it for buildings.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really honestly know of any grant that would necessarily be appealing to that, you know? Most grants like to target splashy new things that look good, you know? Fixing an old elevator in an old building isn't really appealing to grants.
Could the court pay back the general fund once it has some money?
I guess it's, yeah, I mean, the court, the, the judge has indicated that they will fund some of this certainly. I mean, she, we've already discussed it, but not, not in its entirety, you know, because it is for City Hall. But certainly, the court heavily uses this probably the most, I would say, out of City Hall, because, you know. Yeah, the, the court is on the third floor. I mean, City Hall is operated on the third floor, but let's face it, most of the traffic goes to the court, you know? So, so it'll be determined, but, you know, the court is, court's budget is determined by the judge, plus by council. So, you know, this is gonna follow into next year's budget. This is a year out.
Yeah.
Maybe we should, maybe it would be wise to negotiate with them how much they should contribute before we approve it. Because after we approve it, they use, I don't know, what's gonna happen?
I, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's all city money. The judge, the, the judge determines what the budget for the court's going to be, and then council blesses it, you know? So, I mean, it's all money spent on the city. So, I, I mean, I, I don't know that it's valid, it, he just really didn't take it all that much. I mean, the judge had a concern about the fund. She would like to see the facade of City Hall done, which we're trying to get some prices on too, which, again, is for City Hall as well, you know? So it's all things that need to be done for City Hall, so, I mean.
Yeah, maybe using the stairs could, it's better for your health. I barely use it, although I have, I don't remember the time that I use it.
I agree with you, I mean, I, I take the stairs every day. I definitely take stairs.
Use the stairs for.
Well, you take.
It's gonna be healthy.
There's, there's a building requirement to have the.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't, you can't do without the.
So.
Why do we have to have it?
I don't know. I kind of agree with you. Return to the, go make an negotiation with the court. Court fund has the Hamas money. How much they can give it to us, then I'll come to the confirmation.
Do you have, does that have some money or not deliver as well to you?
The, the court doesn't have.
A whole lot of money.
Enough even covered in its head.
Mr. Chair?
We can do 50, 50.
I don't, they don't have. Even 50, 50.
They spent a lot of money rehab, I mean, I don't know if you've been on the third floor recently, but there's been a lot of changes. They did used to have the money, but I think they spent most of it.
No, they didn't have, it was a small fund. The way the court gets revenue in that building-related fund is a portion of the fines that we collect for the city, a very small portion. So it adds a very small portion every year to their balance. So right now, I think the fund balance would be around, maybe 170 or something like that. And it'll add maybe 120, ah, it'll add about 12, 15,000, 20,000 next year, or something like that. So it's not a lot of money. Majority, majority of the payment would have to come out.
Okay, so I, I understand that better. So if really we need to do it, we have no choice, am I right? So if really we need to do it, we have to spend the money?
Yeah, we have no choice actually.
Thank you.
Especially after today, because now we've said that, you know, how, on the record, it's, it's dangerous. So if it does fail and somebody gets hurt, uh, we would be in big trouble. Well, our insurance, I don't know, they're covering.
Yeah.
Either us or our insurance would be in big trouble.
But let's say if we do approve it, you say it's gonna take a year to get it done. So what you gonna do with elders or handicapped men? You wanna go to the third floor?
So we're, we're working on that. There is another elevator in City Hall.
Inside?
It's inside the PD, so we have explored the possibility of maybe doing some temporary construction for temporary access to the third floor, just to get by. But I don't know...
It's for the ADA people.
I don't know if it's, you know, it would be a very limited, very limited...
It's okay, it's okay. Then we just still, still provide the requirement.
We'll probably try to work it where her schedule's the lightest, or maybe she can do some Zoom or something, we'll figure something out.
After that, you're not gonna bring anything more for some money, it's gonna be crazy. So let's go ahead both of them, then.
Councilman Farid?
No.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sumari?
No.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilman Sardman?
Yes.
Mayor didn't have a vote on this one?
No, only the first. It passed, four two, now four yes.
Two no, four yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, alright, Council place, please, Mr. Chair.
Alright, next one is Resolution 2024-107, approving the purchase of five new vehicles for Amtram Police Department.
Motion for purchase?
Please see what the last number...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, thank you, so... Uh, so we're, we look forward to purchasing five vehicles and purchase of five new 2025 Ford Explorers, all-wheel-drive, obviously, we're gonna make sure officers ride the vehicles safely, especially for the public. Specifically, two K nine vehicles and three traffic receptive vehicles. This would definitely help bring a police department's fleet. Obviously, the acquisition of these vehicles will enhance traffic enforcement, pedestrian safety, overall operational capacity and traffic police department, thereby benefiting overall community.
We're very excited, this, as you know, is also a narcotics fund purchase, so there's no drain on the general fund whatsoever. The K nine vehicles are, are in need, um, because, I'm not sure the chief can elaborate on that. The traffic vehicles, um, as you know, we're in desperate need of having some traffic officers out there. We're, uh, right on the verge of getting those special assignments. Uh, the staffing levels are finally getting closer. Um, and then, as you know, we never waste vehicles in this town. So every vehicle we have gets pushed on down, so the old vehicles will get pushed on down to the reserves, uh, who are in very desperate need of vehicles, so...
Is all new vehicles?
These would be brand-new, you know, so...
Mr. Mayor, don't you buy some vehicle before the previous police tip, uh...
Those were DB and patrol, so there's, there's a lot of vehicles throughout City Hall, and then we outfitted, um, uh, there were some code vehicles and building vehicles and some other things. Um, and then we pushed vehicles into the city proper from the PD as well, so, um...
So those money is coming from the general fund?
No, this is coming from the narcotics fund.
So it's okay?
So if we have, uh, uh, many cars, some of them are still in good shape, I saw, I saw some of them, the old ones. So do the reserve need all of them, or we can keep some? I mean, we don't have to have all new cars, I mean, we can have these, but we may need more if we are more police out.
So a few of these are gonna be additions, because as you know, we are adding some traffic positions eventually here, um, which traffic officers, which we don't have right now, so those are coming. So those will be additional units running the city, basically, so we need those. Um, and then the K nine vehicles will be replaced out, and then the old, old, um, reserve vehicles will get decommissioned. So you probably, mayor may not see those or not, probably go, what are they, Crown Vics, chief? Yeah, so those, those are probably...
Just, we have also full, or car reserve as well.
Yes.
I mean, do they drive all cars, and how old, how old do you say the cars are?
Our Crown Vics are from the early 2000s.
Yeah, so those are...
Over twenty years old.
All ready to go out to bash.
And we have two...
Okay.
It says first we hear from our police chiefs and let's get it approved.
Let's get it approved.
Yeah, we should have hoped to... Chief, maybe we had a plan.
We're gonna man, we're gonna man.
He tried to put this, slide that into the resolution.
Uh, Councilman Sumari?
Yes, for safety.
Councilman Farid?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sardman?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes. Long time we don't see, yes, but from some money, this time I see.
Ah, I see, yes, for safety, but I say not for bullshit. Alright, so uh, next one is the one we added earlier, which is Resolution 2024-109, uh, that we are approving common council appointment to board and commission.
Motion? Oh no, that's second.
So this is the one where one of the council number, one of the council members, uh, has to be appointed to the planning commission by the city council. So we would need someone to appoint someone and then get, uh, approved by the rest of the council.
Since, uh, Mr. Mayor, since Mr. Hassan came up, previous meeting from you recommendation, so I'll ask Mr. Hassan to take his position. I know you denied last minute, I don't know if you last time too, since I recommend your name.
Yeah, I put his name and then per his request, he asked me to remove it, so that's...
Right, that's why I say you should go on, uh...
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Reconsider it.
You guys can, uh, we get a, maybe a second on your...
Second for what?
He, he's appointed Hassan.
But you, you said Hassan wanted to be removed?
No, he asked me not to put his name.
Okay.
Uh, because last time it didn't pass. So we, we postponed it until you guys come, all of you, and then decide, because we have only four members. So today, um, you guys can have a discussion, uh, then appoint someone and vote. If it doesn't pass, we...
Well, I think somebody needs to make a motion to appoint someone, otherwise it's just a discussion.
I make a motion.
So did somebody second that motion?
Yeah, yeah.
The mayor asked for second, but I think there's not.
So no one seconds it, then you move forward to another motion, so somebody else has to motion to appoint someone?
Motion, the mayor, mayor motion, Mr. Mohammed Sumari to continue being in the planning commission.
Need to see a second?
Need a second?
Wish somebody to planning committee, no?
Uh, we need one of the members of the city council.
People currently here in the, uh...
Yes, but his term expired, so we need to, uh, renew some.
Then I put a second.
And so now it's open for discussion?
So now, yeah, so we can do second.
I just, since I don't, Mr. Mayor, since I don't get second, my thing's like, since one person dated to last two years, right?
Uh, more.
More than you four years. Four years, so my plan was to tend to, tend to have to have a new person maybe, but since nobody's second, I, my opinion doesn't matter anyways.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman?
The reason I have chosen Councilman Asumari because, you know, the guy owns a lot of businesses in the city of Amtramic, does not, doesn't have hourly job, so he's always in the city of Amtramic, always, you know, he's able to be there for the meetings. So, and that's my, why I continue to choose Mr. Mohammed Sumari, Councilman Mohammed Sumari, to continue being in the planning commission, because I know for sure he will always be there at the, at during the meetings.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor, there's gonna be some political interest.
Not conflict, it's, well, it's, uh, an extra volunteer work and time. Nothing is, uh, very powerful in this commission, it's just volunteer work. I am a member of this planning commission, and, um, sometimes if you are busy, you just wish that you don't have that commitment to go through. But I, I have to be there at the meeting. So, um, you guys can go ahead and vote if no more discussion.
Councilman Sardman?
Yes.
Councilman Sumari?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Let me stay abstract, I'm not voting on this one.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Farid?
Yes.
Alright. Okay, guys, thank you, so motion carries. Uh, we move now to the second added resolution, which is, uh, S, Resolution 2024-110. Yeah, huh?
Just give me some more.
No, that, they removed it.
Oh, okay.
So this one is a resolution to contract with Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for the connect, the speed reconstruction project, Joseph Campo, they need to coordinate speed.
Motion, second?
Mr. Mayor, I have John and John here to speak on this. Uh, basically, we wanna get rolling on this as fast as possible. This just came in today, hot off the press, so we don't wanna waste any time. It's somewhat of an administrative issue, just to team up with MDOT for the bidding. The bids are coming in September 6th through MDOT, and then we're looking to initiate work this fall.
What do you, what do you do, when are you gonna start bidding?
The, uh, under MDOT's rules, they have, the contractor has forty-five days to execute the contract after September 6th. Uh, we anticipate that one of the bidders probably be one of the contractors that have already built Kinif and Old Brook and things, and that we would be able to accelerate that, and we look to start in early part of October for that. And this is being funded eighty-one point eight percent from federal funds.
If you start in October, we can go through it. What do you think, when you can, you should be done by this year?
That's our goal, to finish, you know, it's...
Yes, you have no problem.
Yeah, we're looking to, to wrap up as much as we can. Weather-dependent, it's concrete, so we're able to go much further into the construction season than you are in asphalt through there. So, uh, we anticipate that we would be able to finish that unless some horrific weather came our way in, in the fall. We're gonna push hard, Councilman. We want this done. We want, we want this done for the community, we want, believe us, all of us on this side of the podium wanna done. We, we heard, we heard you were loud and clear on all the construction. Yes. That's why, that's why this summer, we started early on the alleys, we've been pushing as hard as we can. The only thing that's still in itself are state regulations. It gives, it gives us... If it weren't for the state, we'd have been, everything would have been moved around. That's right.
Okay.
Alright, because this is concerning people, we were supposed to have the date on June 7th, and then it was postponed. So we are hoping that we can finish it this year because people are in, in that we like to...
In the state, the state postponed us through the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, because of, uh, Kinif and Joseph Campo is a historic district, and so they had to do a more thorough review, uh, unfortunately, before we could actually get federal obligations. We now have all our obligations, Federal Highway Administration just authorized this project, so we're, we're all locked and loaded.
Still gonna be up to contractor, it's not us.
Yes.
No question, you cannot do that.
Well, but once it's awarded and they're committed, we can push.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we think that it's gonna be a contractor that's worked within the city in the past, understands the community, and will be able to, uh, work with them and accelerate that.
Alright.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sumari?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilman Sardman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Farid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh, with that, we come to the end of the new business list, and, um, we move to the reports. I really don't have much to say, start on my report, uh... Most important event probably that we had over the past two weeks is, uh, is today. We had a, something called the German-American Young Leaders Conference today in downtown Detroit. It's an annual conference, uh, it takes, uh, takes place in a different state every year. Every other year, because one year will be here, another year will be in Germany. And so I was invited to speak at that conference today, uh, along with the mayor of Irbon. There was a, we met so many people from different states there. Uh, some leaders who are chosen carefully to be the future leaders, some professionals as well. So we had a good conference, got to meet some people from Germany and from here, and took place this time in downtown Detroit. And so that was one of the activities that I did today. And, uh, I don't remember what we did over the past two years, two weeks. Supposed to report to you the activities that we do, but there's so many of them that we can't remember, we have been busy. As I was speaking now, unfortunately, I just received a text that, uh, my aunt passed away at Kinif. So, uh, very sad news to hear, and, uh, that's all my report for today. How we move to the mayor for them, report please?
Thank you, Mayor, my condolences, here for more. And last, we are, after three weeks later, meeting is meeting. Thank you, community people, a long time you guys are getting frustrated and hard time for the fencing issue. I hope from today, city council pass the double fencing. So any other issues come up for the fencing issue, I hope city council especially, city manager can help you out, bring to the, any issue to my ex-cabino. And, uh, thanks to our police chief, he make a nice event yesterday. Uh, first time youth, uh, Amtramic Police Youth Academy event, this chamber. Luckily, I was there, part of those, Mayor, council, a few other councilmen, Councilor Samari, Kalid Rafal, and, uh, Sardman was there, it is a good time, kids in our future. Uh, you promoting kids, make them to know their community police, and also the activity, really, really good event it's all. I hope we keep it up every year to let us kids know about the police and our community. I have nothing else to say, thank you very much, and I hope everybody is safe and enjoy your time.
Thank you, I, I also wanna thank the police chief for yesterday's event, I forget to mention that. It was a, uh, new thing for our community, which, uh, everybody is, uh, excited to have. So we came yesterday, we were part of the, uh, opening of this program, and it will continue for another two days maybe. So thank you for everything you do, thanks for the sponsors and for the parents who brought their kids, and for the police department, uh, all the members were, who were part of it. Now, uh, city council reports, please?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I wanna thank everybody who showed up here tonight. I'm glad to be back here in the city of Amtramic, uh, start doing businesses. And my condolences to you and your family, for your aunt, Allah Arhamma, and, uh, wish you a very great night and be safe.
Mr. Mayor, uh, my biggest condolences to you and your family. Uh, also in attendance to the community for participating in the voting process last Tuesday. But the outcome was very low, percentages were very low, I hope in the near future, we'll see more participation from the community. Thirdly, I wanna ask question to Mr. Next, that, uh, you know, the empty lot, a lot of people came out with, uh, they paid their fine for maintaining or something, they will, and then we pass the, uh, resolution that are gonna refund their money, refund their money, what the process in this one, because anyone get the refund yet, because it's a tax, and people think it's a tax.
We never, you talking about where we changed the ordinance for the...
Yes, there, we had a empty lot that we, was...
Well, there wasn't a resolution to like refund the money, it was just we changed the ordinance.
No, we, we're supposed to refund the money, attorney was here too, I think.
I don't remember doing that, I'm not sure.
It can be bought.
You did mention that.
I remember a resolution for that, I'm gonna have to look into that.
What's his name? Conrad was here, and he said, yes, we can refund it.
He did, that is true.
It was amended.
Yeah, he's right, hundred percent.
Okay, I, I mean, I have to get back to Janelle, I don't recall that, I'll tell that.
I do, I do.
I...
You remember asking Conrad?
Yeah, Conrad, I asked him, he was confused, how it works in the process to refund, Conrad's...
We thought we couldn't require the Conrad, so we could, so they answered it.
Okay, alright, let me... Okay, all right, let me make a note.
Thank you, appreciate it. Also, this kids swimming, I know we purchased many vehicle, I don't see many like street been swimming recently, and that's, that'll be it, and thank everyone for being.
John, can we get an update on the streets lately? No, other John?
Well, we got, before we do all the streets, we have to go down the streets, cut the trees. So we've been.
What do you think about the streets trees?
Because you, we're going to have to keep moving the streets, sweep away from the curb, because we got really little branches, so that's what we've been working on, when we're not being pulled in 5,000 directions. We're still a couple guys left, we set to hire two more guys, but we are, we are hitting the streets, cutting down the branches, so we can get the units down the streets. Eventually, I'd like to get all of them now. We got the south, south of Holbrook, all those are done, the trees, and we started. Gallagher, we cut some, Gallagher, Clinger, we just did Clinger, Moran, now they're getting ready to do Belmont, Holbridge.
So vehicle is like too tall or something?
Too tall, yeah, and the branches, some of the trees that just not been maintained over the years, and we were going through and trimming.
What is the vehicle, you don't think that we like?
Oh, it'll scratch and screw up our vehicle, so I've been going through this. What we're doing now is we're actually closing the street down, we're cutting the trees, we're cleaning the catch basins, we're sweeping the street and doing the paddles all at the same time. So I don't have to close the street down four times. So we're just doing the whole section and just banging everything out at one time. That's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we just, our news to you and your family, and everyone supporting us tonight. I just get to back in city, I was back home for the three months, and I apologize, I couldn't tell anyone like I'm leaving for three months. I have to leave in emergency, like for family issue. As many of you know, like I drove out of my first brain last four months, so I have to go back to care of my family and bring them back here. Thanks to Mayor and Council for approving my, uh, festival expenses, and thanks all for your cooperation. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Any more report?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Katsman Hassan.
After that discussion, did not call me two days. After two days calling me again, I said, I got a sample ballot, come with me. I will show you how to vote from the sample ballot, then you can educate here people, and then they can go return the ballot to the city hall. After a couple of discussions, then I realized it is the setup. Then I want to set him up, what I said, and then, that is the only discussion that given to the people, did not give all the discussion, I do have all the discussion. Then one day he told me to come over there, then I take a two friend with me, and I called the Hamtramck City, one of the city official, I might need the police in the Detroit. Officials are no problem, if we really need it, we can send them. And I go there, I want to catch him, he never show up over there. Then he called me again, I called him again, I want to catch, identify and catch him, who is playing that game, all those under behind. It's the same group of people, still doing some nasty thing. And, and I call again and again, after election I call, there is a somebody, one of the American boys, excellent lady answered the phone. I say, your phone number investigated very soon. He said, why? I said, that is the phone, somebody called me for this. So I just want to let the residents know, it is the group who lost the election, try to make up something, come back to that, this year, we want to welcome them. Mayor did welcome them, be ready for next election. Don't try to funny thing, don't try to scam somebody, and thus I'm dislink to the, my job. I'm thinking there's some city official and some elected official involved with that. But I'm not easygoing guy, I will find out the way to catch you. And again, my residents, be careful, all those people who doing that. I want it very clear, if anybody around the election come, I can take challenge with anybody here, I can win the seat. I'm going to be side of the winning, not the losing side. Because I live in Hamtramck 29 years, I help the Hamtramck people, they know me very well. Every election you see my number going up, it will be up, it never going to go down. So be careful what you're doing with who. Thank you.
Uh, any more report?
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Uh, colleague. First, thank you, uh, our new, uh, what's the position we hire, Abdurrahman?
Chehara.
Chehara, congratulations.
Rahman.
Abdurrahman, congratulations, and to join with us. And secondly, Mr. Hassan says something about the videos, I heard some things also. In my election, somebody also calling me to getting some kind of helping me out. I, I know it is a trip, I tried to work with them, I said, okay, I'll come up there, I'll bring my two other people, the cameras, I don't see those sitting around. Second thing, on my phone, he tried to, one of the guy come to sit down with me and discuss with me, those stuff. And it is right at home, I have the record, both of whatever he discussed with me. So whatever he put in the videos, one sided, and before 40 minutes video in my phone. If it's needed, I can provide anybody.
All right.
All those videos, he is very smart, he thought he is doing smartly, I did my part. I did record the conversation, and I have those things. Thank you very much, thank you the residents to understand us, and we try to catch those people, and we don't know, had only one side, the story, full story.
Let's bring the whole conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess with that, we come to the end of the reports. Uh, he does not anything to say.
Mr. Chair?
We can go to the public comments.
Can we call up Mike? Um, I know you want to speak on that, did you want to add on to what you're saying?
No, I have nothing more to add on.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And then Ibrahim, did you want to add on to?
Yes. Good evening again, I have five points I want to talk about. The first one is, I don't know why we are always missing an elected official or appointed official in the city hall. 95% of the time, somebody's missing. The clerk is not here today. You come to council before, you come to council meeting before that, councilman is not here. You come to council before that, before Jimel Tahir came, the chief was always missing. So I think that's an issue, you guys are getting paid by our tax dollars. You guys got to work on that and be responsible. And I'm not just talking about the city council and chief, and city man, I'm talking about the whole city hall. Move the judge, I know it's separate from the city hall, I'm talking about the city, not the judicial system. 95% of the time, somebody's missing. Every single day. I commend you, Mr. Mayor, you have not missed not single council meeting. You went to Yaman State for less than 12 days and came back for the next council meeting, so you don't miss it, thank you for that. Second point, I seen the video, and there's the former mayor, the former city clerk, and the former council candidate talking about the absentee ballots. We've been dealing with this in Hamtramck since 1995, with absentee ballots. Why nobody talked about it before that? I was attacked in 2016 when I spoke, and said we have the majority Muslim council. And most of you, I worked with everyone and helped everyone get elected. I'm an organizing activist over here. So I think the former mayor and the former clerk that were getting paid by our tax dollars, working against the community, against the current council members, and the mayor. Number three, you said you have an Arab speaking people that work for you?
Yes.
Are they Yemeni dialect?
Uh, no, they're not, they're.
Thank you very much, we have the same problem with the course system, they don't speak Yemeni. There's over 50 dialects in our country, so please hire Yemeni American to work for you, and a Bengali American to work for you.
Certainly.
Um, that's time, but you can ask for one more minute if you.
Can I ask for extra time? The fourth point, I would like to commend Chief Tahir and Adnan Gobah. Adnan Gobah, Hamtramck, who started the first youth academy with the police department, thank you guys, you guys doing a great job. Point number five, I want to give my condolences to you, Mr. Mayor, sorry for your loss.
Any more comments?
Nope.
All right. With that, we come to the end, we are going to have a closed session, and we are not going back to vote for our president, right? So, yeah, we're, you guys are free to vote, thank you so much.
Have a good night.